One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10, 12, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10, 12, that 040, Schedule 6, Stop Intersections. Add Taylor Square and Mitchell Avenue, stop sign on Mitchell Avenue, Taylor Square and Quinton Avenue, stop sign on Quinton Avenue. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 2, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2, 64, Department of Police, reference to extra duty rates from 2017 to 2020. And we have ordinances on first reading. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, 15, Buildings and Construction, Add Chapter 10, 15, 70, vacant property registration ordinance. Two, an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption in financial agreement with the Hoffman Housing Urban Renewal Associates, LLC. Then we have resolutions. Resolution one, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax shelter certificates. Four, approve award of contract for furnished and deliver trees for Spring Street, planting program for the Parks Department with Barbado Nursery Corporation items, C, D, F, and H, not to exceed $18,849, with Schitzel's Nursery Incorporated items, A, B, E, and G, not to exceed $6,595, specification number 58517P. Five, authorize application, acceptance, acceptance and execution of grant agreements for 2017, for 2017 Safe and Secure Communities Program, grant number P-699-17, amount $60,000. Six, approve request for city property requested by Deliverance Prayer Revival Tapinacle Church, location Feasther Park for tent service, dates June 19, 2017 through Sunday, June 25, 2017, time 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM. Seven, approve request for use of city property requested by the Civic League of Greater New Brunswick Incorporated, location Recreation Park for annual health fair and fitness challenge, date Saturday, June 3, 2017, time 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Eight, approve request for use of city property requested by John Adams, location Feasther Park for gospel revival, date Thursday, May 18, 2017 through Saturday, May 27, 2017, time 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Nine, approve amendment of resolution, reason to pay the additional fees in the amount of $43,598.34 to the American Arbitration Association for Arbitration Services in the matter of the City of New Brunswick ADS Marvac Construction Corporation, from $80,593.77 to $124,000, excuse me, $192.11. Ten, approve remote emergency temporary appropriations. Eleven, approve transfer of appropriation reserves for 2016 municipal budget. Twelve, approve request for city property requested by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, location Buglo Park in the Village, for three-mile walkathon. Dates Sunday, October 1, 2017, time 7:30 AM to 11:30 PM, uh, 11:30 AM, excuse me. Thirteen, approve, approve request for use of city sidewalk, requested by Rutgers Unicef, location sidewalk from George Street Plaza to Douglas Student Center to Morelle Street for water walk to educate all, all about the 663 million people worldwide who lack access to clean water, date Saturday, April 27, 2017, time 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Fourteen, approve amendment of resolution, R-011755, reason, entrances to Buglo Park from George Street and College Avenue will be closed as well as part of the interlude to maintain safety to race participants and public visiting the park. Approve request for use of city property and closure of streets requested by CGR Racing, location Buglo Park Seminary Place, George Street and College Avenue for the eighth annual United Half Marathon and eight-kay race, date and time, Sunday, April 9, 2017, from 5:00 AM to 12:00 PM, park usage. Dates, date and time, Saturday, April 8, 2017, Sunday, April 9, 2017, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, seminary place, street closure. Date and time, Sunday, April 9, 2017, from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Date and time, Sunday, April 9, 2017, from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, College Avenue closure, police extra duty. Fifteen, approve amendment of resolution, reason, to pay the additional legal fees in the amount of $518.50 to Mitzner and Mitzner for police officer Andrew Weiss in the matter, in the matter of Rodriguez et al. versus police officer Andrew Weiss, from $33,101.45 to $33,619.95. Sixteen, approve request for the use of city property requested by St. Peter's Healthcare System, New Brunswick Recreation, location Buglo Park, Field Place in Eastern Avenue for community health fair in conjunction with New Brunswick Recreation's Day of Fun, Saturday, April, uh, Saturday, June 10, 2017, time 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Seventeen, resolution to approve assignment of financial agreement from Highlands Urban Renewal LLC to Hancock Plaza Square Urban Renewal LLC. Eighteen, approve on-premise raffle at 94 Somerset Street for St. Peter the Apostle Church, April, date April 28, 2017. Nineteen, approve on-premise raffle merchandise at 94 Somerset Street for St. Peter the Apostle Church, date April 28, 2017. Twenty, approve on-premise raffle bingo at 94 Somerset Street for St. Peter the Apostle Church, date April 28, 2017. Twenty-one, approve payment to Hogan, Longo, Moran, Dunst, Duquesne, LFP Bradley J. Frims, JSC, uh, retired, for hearing officer. Uh, reference administrative hearing services in connection with disciplinary hearing, not to exceed $240. Twenty-two, approve award of contract for Ewopa Water Technologies LLC for maintenance and support for Memcor membrane filtration system for the water utility. Term, 12-month period commencing March 16, 2017 and ending March 5, 2018, not to exceed $27,000, fair and open. Twenty-three, authorize award of professional service agreement with Arthur Eltado Jr., Esquire of Law Firm of Apres, Apres McDermott and Masco and Murphy for special counsel for the year 2017 for New Brunswick Police Department, not to exceed $15,000, non pro ton. Twenty-four, approve premise, approve off-premise raffle merchandise at 77 Church Street for court-appointed special advocates of New Jersey Casa, date August 14, 2017. Twenty-five, approve agreement for the use of $60,000 of CBG funds for the Intersect Fund for Assistance in Micro Enterprises, fair and open. Twenty-six, approve award of contract for temperature control, HVAC maintenance and repairs with air systems maintenance. Term, 12-month period commencing March 16, 2017 and ending March 15, 2018, which can be exceeded on a yearly basis for up to two additional years, specification number 58117P, not to exceed $47,500. Twenty-seven, approve amendment of resolution, R-121631, to pay the additional legal fees in the amount of Benedict Devolpment for police director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Victor Rodriguez et al. versus the city of New Brunswick, from $29,180.50 to $29,529. Twenty-eight, approve request for solicitation of funds requested by one of the same foundation for improvement of global health standards, Sundays, March 26, April, April 2, 9, 16, 2030, 30, time 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, location George and Albany Street. Twenty-nine, approve, approve purchase by the police department on the state contract, A-89850/M0003, software licensing related services from Dell Marketing LP for annual renewal agreement for software licenses for the police department. Uh, term 12 months, 12 months commencing April 1, 2017 and ending March 31, 2018, not to exceed $34,874.83. Thirty, approve amendment of resolution, R-111618, reason to pay the final invoices in the amount of $1,374.29 with Mat McGowan Incorporated for engineering and support services for the water utility, not to exceed $1,374.29. Thirty-one, authorized by the Department, Department of Public Works under New Jersey State approved Co-op Number 65MC, ES, CCPS, Educational Services Commission of New Jersey from Trias Incorporated for two, two dump bodies, two spreaders, and two snowplows for the Department of Public Works, not to exceed $147,933.40. Thirty-two, approve award of contract with T. Blooming Kennels Incorporated for kennel services for the amount for the division of animal control. Term 12-month period commencing March 24, 2017 and ending March 30, March 23, 2018, specification number 58317, RFP, not to exceed $50,000, fair and open. Thirty-three, authorize the purchase by Department of Public Works under the New Jersey State approved Co-op Number 65MC, SCCPS, Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, from Campbell Freightliner LLC for two freightliner trucks for the Department of Public Works, not to exceed $193,000, $193,000.21.50. Thirty-four, approve relaxation of the city noise orders requested by 19 U.S. Highway 1 LLC, reason tie-in existing 20 water main for the Raritan Heights Project, dates Friday, March 17, 2017, Tuesday, March 24, 21, 2017, Wednesday, March 22, 2017, time 1:00 AM to 7:00 AM. Thirty-five, approve release of the site performance guarantee bond number B-1074282, in the amount of $803,707 and a balance of onsite inspection fees, the amount of $16,236 to OHM Laboratories Incorporated for 14 Terminal Road Block Number 597.03, Lot Number 2. Thirty-six, approve amendment of resolution, R-071. 071 supplemental services number three, reason additional contract administration, field inspection services and final contract closeout services for the Railroad Avenue Pump Station with T&amp;M Associates for professional engineering services for Railroad Avenue and library pump stations, upgrade, specification number 83213, RFP, not to exceed $2,907.37. Approve of these supplemental services will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Thirty-seven, approve amendment of resolution, R-111627, change order number six, with Joe May Contracting Corporation for 2015 sanitary sewer improvements project, Phase 2A, specification number 89515A, amount of $16,214. Approve approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Thirty-eight, authorize purchase by police department on the state contract, A-81297, from Atlantic Tactical Incorporated for purchase of ammunition, not to exceed $10,375.68. Thirty-nine, approve resolution to authorize refund of escrow, Penrose Properties for Hoffman Housing Associates LLC, amount of $2,877.83. Forty, approve resolution to authorize refund of escrow to New Brunswick Parking Authority for welder project, amount $354.40. Uh, forty-one, approve resolution to authorize refund of escrow to Penrose Management Corporation for Brunswick Arts and Housing, the amount of $9,383.61. Forty-two, approve relaxation of noise orders requested by AmeriQuip Crane Rentals, reason, place a crane on French Street to lift the fresh air fans into the place of the roof of Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, date Saturday to March 25, 2017, alternate date Saturday, April 1, 2017, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Forty-three, approve amendment of resolution, R-02131, change order number seven, RAVA, with Underground Utilities Corporation for 2015 sewer system improvement, project Phase 1A, specification number 892-15A, amount of $70,399.76. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Forty-four, approve amendment of resolution, R-0311783, change order number nine, with Underground Utilities Corporation for 2015 sanitary sewer system improvement, project Phase 1A, specification number 89215A, the amount of $131.63. Approval of this change will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Forty-five, approve request for the solicitation of funds requested by Rutgers University Global Brigades for support, Global Brigades in Central America. Dates Saturdays and Sundays, March 25 and 26, 2017, April 8, 9, 15, 16, 2017, uh, time 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM, locations George Street and Church Street, Dudley Road and Rider's Lane. Forty-six, approve resolution to authorize refund escrow, New Brunswick Department Authority for Gateway Project, amount of $3,810.56. Forty-seven, approve amendment of resolution, R-121361, reason to pay outstanding invoices in the amount of $1,031.44 for Levion Incorporated, FKA Nova Information System for credit card processing from municipal court fees, financial obligations, not to exceed $1,031.44. Forty-eight, approve amendment of resolution, R-021707, reason to pay $107.41 for interpreting services with language services associates for interpreters for municipal court, not to exceed $107.41. Forty-nine, approve the relic act relax, relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Johnson &amp; Johnson, reason install five, a new five-foot wall, five-foot wide sidewalk along the west side of Lanning Lane from George Street to Franklin Township Property Line, dates Monday, uh, Monday through Friday, March 13, 2017, April 28, 2017, holidays excluded, time 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, non pro ton. Fifty, approve resolution for acceptance of long-term tax exemption and application for Hoffman Housing and Urban Renewal Associates, LLC. Fifty-one, approve relaxation of city noise orders requested by AmeriQuip Crane Rentals, reason to place a crane at 171 Somerset Street to remove the existing roof, top unit and steel from the roof of Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, date March 18, 2017, time 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Fifty-two, authorize lease of copy machine for the tax assessors office from Rico USA Incorporated for one Rico model C, number C2503G, colored digital copier system, not to exceed $216,075 per month, again April 1, 2017, and ending March 31, 2021, 48-month contract, state contract, number, number 40467-G, 2075, copiers, maintenance and supplies. Fifty-three, advising consent to the Board of Ethics appointments, Brother Jude Lasada expires December 31, 2019. Name Reverend Francis Rella expires December 31, 2020. Fifty-four, authorize tax collector to transfer overpayments on several taxing utility accounts. And we have items for public discussion, and so on and so forth. Anything else for good?
That's it, Mr. Counselor.
All right, meeting will come to order for Police Call Room.
Counsel Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Counsel Member Egan?
Here.
Counsel Member Escobar?
Here.
Counsel Members Secar, Ludwig?
Here.
Counsel President Fleming?
Here. Please be advised that the notice of requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied in the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice in the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of municipal clerks, municipal, municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News. Would please rise for the pleasure of the leader.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the municipal, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for those that are defending freedom around the world, those that have lost their lives defending freedom, and those that continue to defend freedom to this day.
They mostly include minutes.
Second.
Counsel Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Egan?
Yes.
Counsel Member Escobar?
Yes.
Counsel Members Secar, Ludwig?
Yes.
Counsel President Fleming?
Yes. Okay, now we have ordinance on second reading. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10, 12, Traffic Control and Regulations, 10, 12, 040, Schedule 6, Stop and Intersections, add Taylor Square and Mitchell Avenue, stop sign on Mitchell Avenue, Taylor Square, and Quinton Avenue, stop sign on Quinton Avenue. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this ordinance? This ordinance, a long, please step to the microphone, you have five minutes. All right, seeing none?
Second.
Counsel Member Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Egan?
Yes.
Counsel Member Escobar?
Yes.
Counsel Members Secar, Ludwig?
Yes.
Counsel President Fleming?
Yes. All right, we have number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title Number 2, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2, 64, Department of Police, reference to police extra duty rates from 2017 to 2020. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Please step forward with your name and address, and a reminder that you have five minutes.
Good evening, members of the council, my name is Charles Cradville, I'm from New Brunswick, and I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, uh, community newspaper, would just like to ask if somebody on the council could tell me what the purpose of this ordinance is? Why, uh, why y'all decided to change the rates at this time?
I went to say we're going to ask that, Mr. Welford.
Uh, well, the rates had been previously established by ordinance through 2015. Uh, there were no changes made in 2016. Uh, the PBA did approach the city and asked for an adjustment in the rate that affects the extra-duty police officer. Um, we also, on the city side, thought it was a good opportunity to adjust the rates that we collect on, um, the police vehicle as well as our administrative fee.
Okay, and, uh, can you tell me how this compares to the prior, I guess whatever period of time the prior ordinance covered? Um, are these increases in line with the increases for, say, 2015, 2014?
My guess is they're in line, but I'd have to review the, the document. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately, but...
Okay, and, uh, I do see that the state theater here is mentioned specifically. Uh, is, is there a reason for that? Uh, is there anything different about when an officer's working extra duty for the state theater as opposed to any other customer or client?
Yes, there is, the rate is different for, uh, the state theater and other not-for-profits, um, from within the city. The rates generally speaking, lower.
Okay, how much lower, is I guess, consistently $7 per hour lower?
Uh, yeah, it's in the, um, maybe that third box down below where you're comparing, um, potentially $59 to $71, so $12 less.
Okay, great, and I do see it applies to other, to civic and not-for-profit?
Yes.
Organizations, okay. Um, and was any, uh, you know, research done or thought given to how this compares with other towns? I read a good article on Tap into that compared them.
Yes, the PBA looked at rates, uh, to the officer and the municipalities in most of the towns in Middlesex County, or many of the towns, I shouldn't say most. Uh, we looked at North Brunswick, South Brunswick, the Scottaway Edison Franklin, East Brunswick, and Highland Park.
Thank you, and so, obviously, the officers get paid the, uh, the standard amounts there, and then the city, what does the city do with the administrative fee? To what?
We, we collect it and then add it as an item of revenue to the municipal budget.
Okay, uh, thank you for answering my questions.
Anybody else from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Counsel Member Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Egan?
Yes.
Counsel Member Escobar?
Yes.
Counsel Members Secar, Ludwig?
Yes.
Counsel Member Fleming?
Yes. All right, we have ordinances on first reading. All right, number one, ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 15, Buildings and Construction, add Chapter 15, 70, vacant property registration ordinance.
Move the ordinance setting down April 5 at 6:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Counsel Member Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Egan?
Yes.
Counsel Member Escobar?
Yes.
Counsel Members Secar, Ludwig?
Yes.
Counsel President Fleming?
Yes. We have number two, an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption for financial agreement with Hoffman Housing Urban Renewal Associates, LLC.
Move the ordinance setting down April 5 at 6:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Counsel Member Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Egan?
Yes.
Counsel Member Escobar?
Yes.
Counsel Members Secar, Ludwig?
Yes.
Counsel Member Fleming?
Yes. All right, now we have resolutions. One through fifty-seven. One through fifty-four. Would anybody from the public like to speak on these, uh, resolutions? Uh, come forward, please give your name and address, and a reminder, you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. I'll start with the one that's, uh, most important to me here is, uh, the next to last one. Uh, you're about to consent to mayor's two appointments to the Ethics Board. Um, can, uh, you guys tell me, uh, if you know these folks or, uh, what you know about them and why you think they would be good for the Ethics Board in New Brunswick?
Yes, I mean, we know, I mean, brother, one of whom, Reverend Francis Rella has served in all branches of the military, he has exemplary record, and also he, um, he's been a nurse, he's been a nurse in all branches, and from what we know, he has, he built for the Ethics Board, a longer brother aside, who's also affiliated with St. Peter's the Apostle, with St. Peter's the Apostle Church. Um, he also is a member of the clergy, he's a Christian brother, and I know that he has an outstanding record.
Okay, and Reverend Rella would be Saint Joseph's Church?
Yes.
Right, okay. Um, and, uh, uh, I, I should ask, uh, is it safe to assume that these folks are not registered Democrat Party voters?
Um, I don't know, is it? That's exactly correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Um, go back to the beginning and, and ask my questions as quickly as possible. Uh, 749, uh, can I get an update on the Marvac, hit Marvac case? And when that might wrap up?
We have, still, we're, actually, briefs are due next week, and after the briefs are submitted, the panel has, uh, means 30 days unless they ask for an extension to render a decision. So, we anticipate this spring.
Thank you, can I ask a question about those briefs? Are they public documents?
No, just like everything else.
Just like everything else in there, okay. Can't blame you for trying. Um, okay, I'll move on to, uh, 757, it's number seventeen at the top of page five. Uh, what is this, what's the purpose of this assignment of financial agreement?
To highlight.
He said seventeen? At the top of, of page five, in my office.
The, uh, I, I, I could probably handle that, uh, Mr. Counsel President, I may ask Mr. Patterson as well. It literally is a transfer of the entity from one entity to another with the assumption of all the duties and the obligations under the prior financial agreement. I tried to spell it out in a lot of detail in the resolution. Mr. Patterson wants to add to that, can he?
There's really no change at the property, it's, uh, the property's owned by John Hancock Life Insurance Now in an LLC, and they're just transferring to a, to a REIT, so it's just different money that owns it with the same management.
Oh, REIT?
REIT.
What's that?
Real Estate Investment Trust.
And, uh, when was the sale of the building?
My understanding has to be, it won't happen until the council approves the, the transfer of the financial agreement, assuming it does.
Interesting, and can you tell me what's the nature of the financial agreement? Is it, is it the tax exemption or some other agreement between the city and the original owner?
Well, the financial agreement's been in place since back in 2010, when the property was developed.
And what's the nature of the agreement? What's the finances that are, how, how are the two entities interacting? The city and the?
It's, it's, it's a tax payment, tax exemption, okay.
And so, uh, I guess what Mr. Patterson said is accurate, that there's no change to the city's perspective, the new, uh, entity is going to be responsible for all the same things that the old entity wants.
Yes.
Is it, the same management will be at the, uh, the property, it's just the financial structure is different.
Any idea what the sale price is on that?
It's a huge building.
It's essentially sort of an internal sale, instead of owning it in an LLC, they're going to own it in a REIT, which means other investors can put their money into it if you want to, looking for a real estate investment.
Thank you, I'll consider it. Um, number, uh, it's labeled number 21 here, just a little further down the page, is the payment for Judge Ferens to oversee another administrative hearing. Can you, uh, please tell me who, who was the subject of that administrative hearing?
In the instance with our policy, Mr. Cradville was advising, being here, you know, give out the names of individuals who were involved in disciplinary actions in public forums, so I'm not going to be able to tell you that. But, $240 for change, I believe it is, for administrative proceeding where he presided over a matter that, I believe, is ultimately resolved anyway.
Resolved how? Dismissed or?
Uh, with severance to the employee. With subvention to the employee of the city.
And is that employee still with the city?
He is not.
Okay, so left employment as a result of this. And two hundred and forty dollars, that's a, seems like a good deal for running an entire hearing. I guess it was a short hearing or just compared to the other bills I've seen?
I don't recall the length of it off the top of my head, but I wasn't there, didn't handle it, but that is what Mr. or Judge Ferens billed.
Okay, and are the hearings conducted here in city hall or at the municipal court?
It all depends on the hearing officer, sometimes it is private office, but they're private hearings, so I don't want to the public either, Mr. Cradville.
Understood, understood. So at the bottom of the page, I just want to say Court Appointed Special Advocates of New Jersey is a great organization. I hope you approve their RAPA license. It also happens to be on my birthday and, you know, I think the work they do is good and should be recognized and anything to help them raise money is a good thing, so I hope you'll approve that. I do want to point out, as I often do, number twenty-seven is additional payments for lawyer bills for the police director who has never been to a council meeting. In all my years of attending the council, he's not required to attend like many of the other directors, but apparently the city's still paying his legal bills, in this case to the tune of twenty-nine thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars. I think he owes it to the public to show up at one of these meetings. Can I ask about the one on the top of page seven, the Public Works Purchase? Says it's through a Educational Services Commission. Can you tell me what's, are these educational dump trucks or snowplows? What's the...
It's a cooperative of school districts, I believe, and their pricing is such that we can purchase from state contract, if you will, from this cooperative as opposed to buying through state contract through the state of New Jersey or as opposed to going out and bidding ourselves. We have purchased a number of goods and things from various cooperates over time, but this one happens to be an educational one.
Okay, I just want to thank the DPW for their hard work clearing the snow. Seven seventy-four, what does it mean to tie an existing water main? That's for the Raritan Heights project, that would be the development proposed for the movie theater, is that correct?
Yes.
Actually, there's a, that should have been eight-inch water main. This specifically for this new ordinance, they are going to modify or install two new valves on the private property where the movie theaters are. They have to do it on the overnight hours because they have to wait for the theater to empty out because they're actually going to cut the water off to the theater, so, but it's not, unfortunately, that's a type that should be eight-inch, not twenty-inch, and this work has happened on the private property.
Okay, what does it mean to tie a water main?
It's just that there are, if you're going, in the future, this project will have to get another water source in order to meet the fire requirement for the building, so they're going to have to run new pipe out and tie it to an existing twenty-inch main, which is along with one. Tie means you just, you bring a new line off that main, you're adding a line to the big pipe that's in the ground.
Gotcha, and both of those will be paid for by the developer, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great, and is that going to be close enough to homes that it's going to bother people, noise for, you know, one AM to seven AM? So, or is it kind of like...
The closest thing is the adjacent Hoffman Apartments, the two buildings that face north. So we have to note, they have, these people have to notify them on the morning, that's why we have...
But that's something else, so it's more...
There's a good distance, but no, it's on the same side.
Oh, great.
But they're, the contractor's intention to do all the heavy digging, breaking during the day, so all they can do at night is cut the pipe and re-put the valve, so that's what they're attempting.
Thanks for the thorough answers. I would like to ask about these three resolutions to refund escrow, the bottom of page eight, Penrose, Parking Authority, Penrose. What's this, what's this for?
Well, generally, at the end of a project, the engineering department or economic development looks at an escrow account that was established, and if they see there's no need to charge any other charges against the escrow account, they recommend refund to the finance officer, and that's what's happening in these three cases.
Thank you. Okay, and can you tell me Hoffman Housing Urban Associates, what project is that that's completed?
I can answer that.
That's the project to replace a number of the units from the Hoffman Pavilion on Nielsen Street. They had an application and that project didn't get refunded, and they are coming in with a new revised project beyond the zoning board later this month. So the escrow left in the old account gets refunded to them and they fund the new escrow for the new application.
Okay, I think it's a little bit interesting, we're going to pay them back and then they're going to pay us right away, and they're the ones who kind of promised they were going to build a building and then didn't build it, so I question why we're writing them checks.
It's their money.
Didn't they get a big loan from the housing authority to do this project?
It's their money.
Okay, I see another refund, then I'll just move on, and then if you'll bear with me, I want to find out about this tax exemption, seven ninety, fifty, you've got an application for this same project, Hoffman Housing Urban Renewal. Can you tell me what's the significance of Hoffman? Is that John Hoffman or why is this, is it just the name of the old building is Hoffman?
I don't know derivation of it, it's the name of the old building, they're using that for this project also. This is, the statute requires both a resolution to approve the application and then the ordinance, which was also on first reading, is to provide an abatement for the project, so it can provide sixty-six units of affordable housing for senior citizens at that location.
All seniors?
All seniors.
All seniors, okay. Thank you, I hope you give us a leeway in the public talk, I'll sit down.
Would anybody else from the public like to comment on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the resolutions. Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
All right, now we're going to go to public discussion. Anybody from the public like to make any comments? Please step forward to the microphone, give your name and address, mind you, we have five minutes.
I mean, yeah, we use five minutes, they're simple and quick today. My name, Demi Almore, one of the new employees. I will say the city's doing a good job doing the roads, but I would like to ask you, are they going to be paid overtime to put down more salt to make sure the roads are in good condition for the kids to go to school in the morning?
We will not be putting down additional salt this evening. We salted all day today, many of the roads around the schools where they, we were particularly around the schools.
Oh, so, okay, I'm glad you said that, particularly around the schools, because like I said, I know during the situation during the day, some of the roads are still pretty bad, not saying that against the workers, but like I said, I know they're tired, and like I said, the word was last time, what, the city's too cheap to use taxpayers' money to make sure that, well, you wasn't here, so I see you smiling, you wasn't here before, but yes, that was the comment, where they're too cheap to use the money to help keep the roads cleaner.
Actually, we city put down about three hundred tons of salt on the store.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Like I said, good job to the workers, I know they're tired, believe me, but still work needs to be done. Then also, situation with the snow. I hope the city doesn't speed up and give the tickets, say, Joyce Comer Avenue and Livingston Avenue. I realize where it's been complaints on that, and it will be coming down. I realize on roads that are no parking, so they can be snowplowed, but wow, so many people who's plowed their streets and wow how the city came back and plowed in where you have a few disabled and senior citizens. At least I'm asking the city, and they are too, to give them a little more time, even though they cleaned their roads and then what, the city comes out and gives them tickets, a hundred and fifty-dollar ticket like they did before, but yes, for the Joyce Comer and Livingston Avenue, yes, and you would see how the snow was plowed all along their sidewalks again. So I'm just saying, would you, people are saying also that could not come down, would you please give them a break with the tickets, give them time if they can get their sidewalks clean? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else from the public like to remind you that you have five minutes?
Good evening, sir, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. I want to start with a correction to my remarks at the last meeting. The Clean City Block Captain Meeting is going to be held on March twenty-third, and maybe somebody can tell me the location, I think it's the library?
No, it is the...
Huguenz, huh?
Correct, so that's a really good thing, I'm sorry I misspoke, it's March twenty-third, and people who want to make their neighborhoods clean should go there. I want to thank Mr. Patterson for hosting, you know, a hearing on the federal funding the city gets and also making a presentation about the future of the Farron parking deck, and I thought we had a good conversation. What allowed it to be a good conversation that ended on a good note is that I wasn't kept to a strict five-minute time limit, we even mentioned that and, you know, joked about that a little bit, and I think that I would encourage you today, if you can, to give me a little leeway, since it appears I'm the last member of the public that wishes to speak tonight, do you think you could do that for me?
Just a little cross that bridge if you want to.
Okay, because I have, I have a lot of questions that you might not, but I also have some questions that might be better. All right, so start out with the UEZ program. How does that work and what changes have been made in the past few years to the way urban enterprise?
Urban enterprise, yes.
Governor Christie basically dismantled the program a number of years ago. The businesses that were in the program, and you can still sign up for it, can still charge the fifty percent sales tax, but the municipalities that participate in the program, like New Brunswick, do not get to keep that money, which was the original idea, so that the municipalities could use that for public improvement. That's one of the ways we funded a large portion of the George Street, Streetscape, for instance, and we used it for a number of other different improvements in the city and services, and we've had to find other funding sources since we no longer have that money. Mr. Cradville may be referring to several cities which did not get their UEZ certification renewed, we're not one of those, we have another, I think, seven years left in our certification.
Thank you for the answers. It's my understanding that the Parking Authority has vehicles that have commercial plates on them, I was just curious if that's the best practice. I noticed other government agencies have municipal government plates on them. Does anybody know?
Nobody. Can't comment, so.
We can, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe Mr. Egan could ask?
I would ask the attorney for the Parking Authority, I mean, I don't know if there's any special reason why they would have commercial plates or not commercial plates. They would have the answer.
Okay, I'll check. Is there a reason the budget for the last fiscal year is not on the Housing Authority's website?
The housing. I was at the, I said the housing.
Okay, could Councilwoman Escobar, please, please bring that up?
Right here.
Okay, and part of the reason I bring that up is that there's a person who works there named Andrea Ito White, and I have a document for you, it's the check request, this is a check request for her to get a six-hundred-dollar per diem for a trip to Huntsville, Alabama. I'll point out that she did not properly disclose this on her financial disclosure forms next year, but also that I've been trying to get receipts from this trip since October of two thousand and fifteen, and this is the only trip that a Housing Authority employee or board member has taken that the receipts haven't been produced. And I do know that in a budget, the Housing Authority is asked to certify whether its employee, whether it follows a policy to have receipts given for reimbursements like this. And I would just like to, I mean, I've had back and forth with the Councilwoman, and you said that they were going to, you were going to try to get them to provide me a proof that she attended some seminar, haven't gotten that, haven't gotten any receipts, it's going on almost, it's a year and a half now.
But you did receive an answer, and I think I went to talk about it last time also, and anything that is, when you spend less than twenty-five dollars, you don't have to provide a receipt, so it seems that that's the case here when she went, you know, the expenditures that she had. I did, and I told you that I did ask John Clark to provide you with, look, she was here, she was in a training actually, so I didn't know that he didn't give it to you, but the receipts, you know, the reason you don't have it probably because she spent less than twenty, you know, it's twenty-five dollars up when you need to submit a receipt, other than that you don't have to, and you weren't given that answer.
Is that what the policy says though?
That's what, that's what my knowledge, that's what I was advised.
Okay, well, I think it's a bit of a stretch to think that she spent the entire six-hundred dollars in chunks that were always less than twenty-five dollars, when that's just not how it looks when you look at other people's receipts. They actually have receipts. There's no receipts produced for what this six-hundred dollars went to, and I'll give a copy of the clerk, we can share it with you guys after the meeting, but this is suspicious and should be looked into. I also want to ask about the New Brunswick Water Utility, of course, got a big fine from the state for the violations in two thousand and ten through two thousand and thirteen, so three hundred fifty-five thousand dollar fine was my understanding. Can you give me an update on what the city's doing about that? Are they going to pay the fine?
Yes, we had been negotiating with the DEP, a settlement that would be different than paying the fine. It was called a SEF, which I think stands for Supplemental Environmental Project. We had some conversations about doing some stormwater improvements for a tributary that flows into the DNR Canal in Franklin, but quite frankly, the conversations kind of faded and we haven't had a meaningful conversation with them for probably, I'd say, a year, year and a half now.
So what's going to happen? Is the city going to pay?
I don't know, I think we would prefer to enter into the SEF, pay the fine, if you will, in the form of, you know, public improvement that would benefit the water quality in the DNR Canal. It just hasn't, it hasn't been formalized at this point.
Okay, respectfully, can you tell me what the holdup is? Are they just not being responsive to the city's inquiries or what?
There are a holdup.
I would just call it a lack of communication, to be honest. I don't know if there's a holdup on their end, if there's a change of feeling on their part, but if there is, they have not communicated that to us. We, of course, have tried to focus on other things and continue to improve the utility as best we can, but it is still hanging out there. I think it's still a live discussion, but it really hasn't been, we haven't had a meaningful conversation in about a year and a half.
Thank you for the thorough answer. Can I ask when the next lead and copper testing is going to be done for the water utility?
Next lead and copper test?
Yes, thank you. We're actually starting the process as we speak now. We are enhancing our sampling pool from thirty to sixty. We've been hitting the streets on the weekends, trying to get to as many houses that qualify for the testing. We're in the process now of developing, redeveloping our letter with the instructions, translating it to Spanish as well. That's where we are currently, like, right up to date, and I hope to get sampling by the end of the month.
Great.
And we'll be doing two cycles, by the way, this year, so we're going to do a spring, we're going to do a fall as well.
Great, and so the Schwartz Robeson Housing is seventy years old, sixty-seven in some cases, is that eligible?
No, it is not, okay, it's totally out of the pool. It has to be a single-family residence, that's by the rule, DEP rule, NEPA rule as well.
So in the course of the normal lead and copper testing, the Schwartz Robeson Housing is not tested?
Not tested.
Would not qualify.
Can I then make a humble request?
Sure.
That the water utility goes out of their way, even though it won't help them meet the requirements, even though they're busy with the getting the sixty sample sites done, could somebody go up there and do some testing on the water? Because I just, I just have a bad feeling about it. I really, I've been, I've been asking, the Housing Authority just says, oh, the water utility's taking care of it, but what we just learned tonight is that the water utility in the course of its regular lead and copper testing is never testing Schwartz Robeson for lead and copper. Can we please go out of our way to do that test?
We take that under advisement.
I would agree that we should take it under advisement, and that test should be done at the, the Housing Authority should be responsible for taking that test. Any testing that we do, okay, any test, any day, anywhere, has to be reported, and if we report that, that could potentially be a violation that we are sampling outside of our pool. Okay?
Okay, can you communicate that to the Housing Authority? Can someone please communicate that to the Housing Authority that they are responsible for testing the water in Schwartz Robeson Housing? Thank you. What are the departmental budget hearings for this year?
We haven't scheduled them yet, but we are going to be introducing the budget in three weeks at the next council meeting. I think you had, or asked that question earlier, we said we would let you know when we schedule it, we just haven't done it yet.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. You, you will let me know when, shoot me an email?
We'll follow through by with our commitment to, yes.
Thank you, appreciate that. And so I do want to move on to a couple of questions that I asked last time that were not answered.
We have 45 towns.
Wow, for the record, okay. Thank you, thank you. Hey, I, I just, I wanted to ask, I did ask about where to, where such a complaint could be filed, referring to a complaint for behavior unbecoming of a council person, inappropriate behavior, and I didn't really, I don't think we got a straight answer. It's not, it wouldn't fit the Ethics Board, that wouldn't be appropriate. So where is the proper place? It was, you know, for the record, Mr. Shami did say, you know, that it's a pretty involved process, but you can actually have a council member suspended and under the Faulkner Act and said that that conduct would obviously have to be egregious, but he didn't know off the top of his head what the process would be. Could, has he looked into that at all? Is there a process for people to make complaints about inappropriate behavior on the part of the council?
Mr. Council President, members of council, with respect to the process I referred to before, really referred to elected officials who were under criminal charges, indictment and or, you know, who were convicted and refused to step down. I looked at our ordinances and quite frankly, I think the only avenue would be to the Ethics Board. Mr. Cradville suggests that perhaps they don't have the exact framework for that. I don't see any other form that we can go to with such a complaint. I will remind you all that, you know, everybody has a First Amendment right, say what they want, when they want. To the extent that it may rise to a level to offend someone or inappropriate, that's one matter, but I don't, I can't point you to a specific tribunal or, or worded section which would be appropriate for Mr. Cradville's type of complaint, other than the Ethics Board. I did check with the State League of Municipalities and there was no.
Set up?
I did, I did check with the State League of Municipalities in Trenton and there was no forum for any such process.
Did you get that? Yeah, so, so I guess the only thing would be criminal charges or the state's recall law, right? The constitutional right of citizens to recall any elected official.
That's within your option.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time tonight. See you next time.
Anybody else from the public? Before we close, I just want to wish March is Women's History Month and I didn't want to close out the month without acknowledging some of the great women that we work with every day. We always hear about people who we know who are famous, you know, they won, we won the shattered glass ceiling this year with the first woman president, but there is millions of other women that do unsung things every day, like taking care of their children, holding up their houses and just doing everything, you know, things that we will never recognize and things we will never notice. If you have a woman in your house, I just encourage you to encourage her each and every day, because the stuff that we do as men, we wouldn't be able to uphold our houses. If you work with a woman, I work in a profession that is dominated by women, probably 80 to 20, 80% to 20%, and they let us know about it every single day. And my house is the same way. And I just want to acknowledge the women that we work with on the council. I wish I had something to give you all, but I just want to say that I appreciate all y'all. Suzanne, Rebecca, Charlie, Jennifer, I don't want to start naming names, but anybody else out there that I didn't name, charge it to my head and not to my heart, we really do appreciate you from the bottom of my heart and this city. I can take a little leeway with that. We just want to thank you. Liz, can we give them a hand real quick? Okay, seeing anybody else? Anybody else? Oh, our folks have been in your absence also. Saint Pat, I'm sorry, I'm.
You know I apologize.
Go ahead. Saint Patrick's Day also. Happy Saint Patrick's Day to everybody. Everybody, go out and celebrate, y'all can bring your bags, something, I'm making a point for you, so, I can do it for you. Now, can you extend that to our other clerks also? Thank you, thank you so much. Most of you are here?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikara Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.